Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, November 3rd, 2008. It is on or about 6:30 PM. This evening, City Council is going to have a work session where they will be discussing the occupant-tenant education form and what's going on with that. Then on or about 7:30 PM, we will go into a regular session of council. So tonight, we're here to talk about the occupant-tenant education form. We'd like to start. Law Director?
I wasn't anticipating leading any sort of a discussion. And I pretty well said everything I needed to say at the last meeting. And so, you know, basically, my position is, you know, I've raised a few concerns which may or may not be concerns that are shared by members of council. And, you know, as I brought our stack of complaints that we had at the last meeting here, we're ready to go forward if that's what council wants to do. However, if there, you know, I think if there were other things that council wanted to look at as well, I guess the bottom line for me is we're, you know, those, myself and my prosecutors are just awaiting our orders on what council wants done.
I will mention that we are in receipt of a letter from Beverly Flanagan going over a lot of different points that she and many other members of the community feel very strongly about. Member Phillips, is there any discussion you wished to bring to this tonight? We may have a work session with very little work being done. Member Bain, how about you?
Um, did we already say that it ended up being a minor misdemeanor because of where we placed it? Because we didn't put a clause on it that said what we were asking for in terms of penalty?
No. So that's how that happened?
That's how that happened, yes. I thought I'd share that with you.
Okay.
So what would the penalty be? Would it be $150?
It would be up to the discretion of, I mean, as with any minor misdemeanor, it's going to be up to the court's discretion, basically. But the most they could find would be $150 for an individual violation.
I really think we should proceed. But because we haven't enforced it previously, I have a little problem with clobbering people with a huge fine right off the bat. If they had several properties, you know, it could really, really add up. So I'm for prosecution. I just don't think we should, we should really hammer them financially since we have not enforced it in three years or two years or whatever.
Since it was passed.
Since it was passed.
Other comments?
Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you. I would add that I have been in discussion with both sides or people who have support and concerns relevant to this issue. And I would say that the Neighborhood Association on the West Side is strongly in advocacy for us to pursue supporting the way the law is written and following through with that. And having not been on council before, as it was being discussed and made into law, I recognize that there is grave concern from the community to somehow look at how we are educating people, young people, how we are educating tenants, and how we are enforcing certain code. So I definitely see both sides of this, but I do need to express that Neighborhood Association and people on the West Side have expressed their concerns to me as following through and pursuing it. But like I said, I've also had discussions with others that want to look at it and to reexamine or re-explore the big idea. And we're, what are we trying to accomplish here as a community, as in educating people as they become first-time renters? So I can see both sides.
I guess the one point I haven't heard made that I remember making when it was originally passed a few years ago. And one of the main complaints, as I hear it, from property owners is the difficulty in obtaining the signature. And I find this somewhat perplexing, and maybe somebody can help me out with this. Because in the last couple of weeks, I admitted my father to a nursing home. And it's a strange correlation, but as I'm sitting there and signing one form after another in a stack of forms like this, and I've done this for 25 years from the other side of the desk, so I know all about it. And as they pass one to me and I'd sign it and they'd said, "And I need a copy for our files." So I'd have to sign a copy for their files to show the nursing home on Budsmann and Department of Health that they gave me this copy of the form. And then, you know, as I would sign another, I'd sign yet one more for their files. And we're signing people into a house where they are paying at least $400 a month, and they're signing a lease. I'm still having trouble understanding why when they sign two copies of a lease, they can't sign two copies of a tenant information form. And I guess I would also relate it to the times that I have bought a car and gotten a loan on it. And I sign a copy of this, and then I sign a copy and give them for their files. I'm having trouble understanding, and please, somebody explain it to me, why it is so impossible for us to make people aware of the things that they need to be aware of living in that apartment. When the garbage goes out, how many people legally live there, and a few other things. That is the education all of us claim we feel solidly and desirous of wanting to do. One of the best landlords in this town is probably L.A. Barstow, and she did call and fill my ears full on how difficult it can be when people turn over during the year and one person moves out and somebody else moves in at that place. And it's not on the same cycle as what the leases are and what the other things are. But, you know, if you're managing your properties, how difficult is it to know who's sending you the check? And click, do you have a copy of their form? So anyway, those are my comments. Member Sands, do you wish to weigh in on any of this?
No, I'm listening at this point. I apologize for being late. But I don't understand your concern. I don't understand why it's so difficult either. And I, sorry, I missed Kent's comments because I'm behind this ordinance from its inception, and I always saw it as an educational tool. The landlord is the one person who has face-to-face contact with these renters as they move in to the neighborhood and off of campus and into our neighborhoods and our community. And it seemed to me, as it seemed to most council members at the time we discussed it, that this was the moment most likely to lead to some knowledge about the garbage schedules, the rules regarding garbage cans, litter, and all that stuff that's in the I don't understand the reluctance to put your name on a piece of paper. And I agree wholeheartedly in, as we grow up and move out into the broader world, out of our neighborhoods, we sign a lot of stuff, and it's just expected of us. Not necessarily anything happens to it, except it goes in somebody's file. So I would like to see this ordinance as it exists, enforced, follow through with the filings as necessary. I have heard some comments from people last week and on the phone this past week that maybe we, there are some amendments that we could make to this in the future. But this is our ordinance now. It has a penalty clause in it, and I think we should go ahead and enforce that. That's my comment.
Member Phillips?
The only thing that I do feel strongly that we need to change is with the form itself, not with the ordinance. If you look at the, I mentioned this last week, that the actual ordinance does not say anything about producing the form upon demand for a law enforcement or a code officer. And I think from what I've heard from students is that they feel like that really, you know, being expected or being required to produce some document on demand is really unrealistic and possibly a violation of their Fourth Amendment rights. So the form itself, you know, can be changed administratively. In that introductory paragraph, rather than saying the form shall be kept by the occupants and, you know, made available immediately upon request, just filed with the code office. And in the two places at the end where it says it's a penalty if you don't have the form, I think if you don't file the form, I think that that would be more appropriate. And that the question of producing it when you're asked for it was never in the language that was placed in the city code. And I'd like to see the form amended in that way.
Yes. Member Nicely?
I'd just like to reiterate my support of this and enforcing it and respecting, you know, the ordinance that created this. And it was passed unanimously by council members earlier. And so I think we should proceed. I think it's a responsibility that we have, and that's what we've identified, to educating the students or people who do rent, what their rights and responsibilities are. And that's an important responsibility, I think, that we bear as being part of the group that helps this community, you know, live and function together. You know, I might just make a comment too, you know, tying it in a way to the Halloween that was this, just past Saturday night. And, you know, when we were out on duty, people made comments like, "Oh, is it a safe Halloween?" You know, "We're having a safe and happy, you know, Halloween." But, you know, that effort to educate the community over several years, I think, in part along with some university, new university policies, has combined to make a difference in student attitudes. And they were, for the most part, the students that we encountered out there were helpful. So I think that to the extent, same extent that we can work to educate people who are renting here, what their rights and responsibilities are, then we should be doing that. And this is part of the code now, so I think we should be enforcing it.
Thank you. Member Costner, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I think we're really looking at two things here that this is trying to address. One is education, which is, I think it does a minimal job at education. I think it's a good effort in that regard. I mean, you mentioned the number of forms you have to fill out for anything just about these days that's legal. You don't read them most of the time. And I've actually seen students sign these forms and not even read them at all. This was a few weeks ago in a coffee shop. So it was landlord that was doing their duty and having it signed, which is good. But it was just signing off another form. I think that the students that do take the time to read it, it is probably likely beneficial to them. I think in terms of education, that component will have to come from another way, another avenue to achieve the education. The second thing is really, this is addressing occupancy and trying to find a way to enforce the city's occupancy codes for the residential neighborhoods. And again, I think it's minimally effective at that, if at all. And I guess when you have more than three students in a house, I think they're going to, they're going to know, and I mean, just to save money, they're going to, of course, sign off on the paper in a legal way. So I think it's, I think it's an effort in the right direction. I don't see it as being terribly effective the way that it is operating right now.
Other comments? Member Kuhn?
I think it would be, it would be really great if the landlords could just take the time to go over the form with their tenants, not just handing it to them and saying, "You need to sign this." But as Nancy did last week, just go over it and say, you know, "This is, this is how you take care of your recycling and your trash and so forth." Just if landlords could be encouraged to just take the time to go over the form with their tenants, I think that would be really helpful.
It's probably true that the same renter that signed without reading, probably signed their lease without reading it. And how many of us have signed a mortgage? Anyone that's ever been through a closing at a bank? And you, you know, come upon a stack of papers like that? Who here can honestly say they signed, read every one of them they signed?
It's too long ago. I can't remember.
You did? Okay. How long did your closing take? Is the only thing I would ask. But yeah. But anyway, I want to go back to everybody kind of in order. Member Butler?
Thank you, President. I would also add that I did speak with some landlords who raised a concern, and they're members of our community as well, that expressed some ideas that I hadn't thought about because I'm not a landlord. So I think that's why it's challenging for me as well, because I'm not in their shoes. But one issue that was mentioned was, and I think there was reference to this last week, was that if we are trying to educate people and we're having them sign this lease or this agreement nine months to a year in advance, how much of that information then is going to be retained, are they going to recall after a whole summer away before they come back to the university? And so if, I guess it's challenging. And if it does take a community to raise a child, as the phrase goes, maybe we need more of the community involved in this education process. Maybe we can request or encourage the university to be even more engaged in this education process. I think they've made some efforts in the right direction, but I don't think the sole responsibility in dealing with these adults is strictly on the landlord or the, I think we are dealing with adults that happen to be first-time renters, and there's an onus on them as well. But education is a responsibility of all of us, including all the players, which would be the university as well.
I guess the only thing I would say back to that is, at least they've been given it in one form. And when they want to think about, when is recycling day? Where, what day does the garbage go out? They know that they've got one thing that they could refer to, you know, and figure it out. Or, let's see, are we able to rent to one other person or not? You know, it may come to a... Member Bain, did you have?
I was rolling my eyes. You miss sharing?
I'm not going in a perfect order, up and down, but I...
It's not alphabetical. It's not...
It's not alphabetical.
What order is it?
It was kind of...
Random.
Random order.
Popcorn style.
Yeah, popcorn style.
We took over, the city of Athens took over code enforcement when the university got out of the inspection market in perhaps the...
'64 is the first... First dates I remember of seeing that legislation passed.
Okay. I guess I thought it was later than that, because I remember the code office used to be where, in the law administration building area. But having said that, I want, I think that it's probably something that could happen, ask them to go back. But I don't think it will happen. The other, other than the question about whether we should change the penalty, and I'd like to hear the administration's recommendation on that, the other thing I think that is the spirit of this, and I had a couple of emails from people that said they do this before we even started. There were other landlords who I consider to be good landlords who do this already. A couple of different names come to mind, you probably, when you think of the good landlords in town, you know who they are. Not that the rest are not good, but these are exemplary people. But, you know, the spirit was that when you hand them the keys, you say, "Oh, yes, and by the way, when you go into my house, there's a little problem with the flap on that one toilet. I've tried to have it fixed 14 times and can't seem to get it." The other thing is, you know, just going through your asset, and part of your asset protection would be to get the people who are renting from you to understand what their obligations are to you and especially to the people surrounding them. And I think that the spirit was that, that it would be the moment of, as Dale used to say, and he was on his way out when he did this, but he would say, he was resigning, or you know, moving on from council, but he would say, "The educable moment." And, you know, "I'm not in education administration," but he seemed to think that this was the time. Not, you know, "Don't send it home with them. It's one more piece of paper to end up in the trash or recycling." And "Don't try to do it a year in advance." I mean, I think that the city made admirable efforts at educating individuals in March after they had already signed their leases and, you know, and going out. And I just don't think there's an apparatus there that... We went out to these little, I don't know what they were, little educational experiences at the university. Not we, not me personally, but this administration. I remember Steve Pearson was out and tried, but, you know, people do forget. It's just, you know, all of a sudden, you're there. What are your, what do you, what do you have to do for your neighbors? I mean, you know, it's the same old civic behavior component that we were striving for.
Did this not also come about when we were having people line up at the podium over there complaining about people on their street, many times renters that were leaving the garbage cans out next to the street all the time and dumping the garbage there? Landlords that were not putting them or letting them know that they had to be out of view of the street? And a lot of different efforts at trying to clean up litter.
Yeah, but remember, we had, you know, we had our own experience with that, how in the previous administration, they went along the street and tagged all the residential units out there. I actually had an experience with several of my undergrad advisors who had, who were keeping the garbage can conveniently right in front of the front porch. And so I said, "Why are you, why is it there?" It was up on North Lancaster Street across from the welfare office. And they said, "Well, it's really convenient." I said, "Well, where do you keep your garbage can at home?" "In the backyard." And I said, "Well, this is your home. The people around you are here." Bingo. Move it to the backyard." And, you know, they knew I was watching it, so they did it for a while, but they're gone. You know, and it's, but the problem is, we have this continuous influx of new people that we are even able to survive sometimes amazes me. Because we're constantly reeducating people. And so, anyway, I'm...
And we can't think of a better time to do it, I guess. Over to this side again to whoever wishes to speak. My usual popcorn...
Just, I mean, just looking at what's in the form, we're talking about litter, which is, continues to be a problem that we've tried very hard to work on in the city. Noise control, nuisance party, animal control. And really, I think what the impetus behind this was frustration with the city administration in previous years not being able to enforce these laws. And am I right that that was sort of what led to this?
Well, and a lot of people not being aware of the laws. How do you, you want to be the policeman that pounds on the door when they did not realize that after 11 o'clock at night on Thursday night, you know, the decibels need to be below, 10 o'clock, I'm sorry, need to be below, maybe I need a copy of the form, below a certain number.
We all do.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think a lot of it was, how do you enforce it if we really have not made people aware of it very well? And where is the best time to do it? Were you finished?
Yes.
Chris?
And I hear what you're saying about this may not be the most effective way or the only way, but I just think, number one, you know, we've, we've heard of the different, you know, somebody signing a form, "Don't read it," to, you know, a brief explanation to a lengthier explanation. I mean, there are all different kinds of styles of teaching. We've encountered them in our different classes that we've taken before. Some people are compelling and passionate about things. Others are like, "Read it on your own when you get a moment." But I'd also make the point that I think we need to, and I think Paul has alluded to, Mayor Wile has alluded to this earlier, is that people need to hear things in different ways, at different times, using different formats. So we might be thinking about, we're going to be having, premiering our, the city's new website soon, and that might be an educable moment, that there might be some other places where we can be working with off-campus housing. I would think that Judy Pearson would probably be very cooperative and willing to work with us to get the forum out, the information out in any number of ways. Use our access channel, you know. So a lot of different ways that we can get, get that through to people. And we probably will need to use a number of measures.
Yeah. Member Sands?
And I really think there's a difference between education and enforcement. We don't want to come to the point of enforcing these. We want people to understand that these restrictions are there, these opportunities are there in the neighborhood also. But we don't necessarily want the police or the code office to go and enforce and fine and do all that. We'd much prefer that people were aware of what was going on in the city. And again, I guess Dale sold me on that educable moment. I think that's, and as a landlord, it's landlord's opportunity to spend some time with their tenants. And if it's not the landlord, then it's the property manager. At some point, somebody hands that renter a key, and five minutes spent with him is worthwhile, I think. Still, I agree, I will agree that there are probably some, maybe administrative changes that could be and should be made to this, but the thrust of it, the idea of it, I still am behind. I know what I'm trying to say is, actually, the university did begin this past year of kind of a program with sophomores living in the dorms about moving into the community. And that could be expanded, and part of the expansion could be something like this. So, yeah, we need to cooperate with lots of people.
Member Kuhn?
Regarding the tenants refusing to sign, would the landlord be in compliance if the landlord just put a note on it and said, "My tenants refuse to sign," and the landlord signs and submits it?
Did I not read that basically we are able to do that, that the landlord...
Yeah, I can't publicly speak for the code office, but I think that's how they've been handling those, that they've been accepting those forms, even in the cases where the tenants refuse to sign under the theory that, which I think is what you're getting at, which is that you can't really hold a third-party accountable for somebody telling you to sign something.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
I believe that's what the code office has been doing on it.
You know, and I, there was one other point that was made some time ago by former mayor Abel that I think is kind of worth repeating. And that is that there's a different expectations for people that are moving into some of our close-in neighborhoods than there is if you are moving into one of the very large apartment complexes that's pretty much totally populated with students that enjoy a louder lifestyle on a Friday night than somebody my age does. So, you know, this form is not made necessary for the very large players, you know, with the very large complexes for that reason. But I lived for 17 years on East State Street clinging to a little piece of land that still had not become a complete student area. It was certainly a nice mix of students and year-round residents and others. And for three years in Franklin and Grovener area. Loved it living there, but boy, I'll tell you, the place that I used to live next to, we dubbed Big Blue, which for a long time was painted kind of this day-glow blue. And it would have a turnover of people, not one all-street parking place, and up to 12 people living there at a time, you know. And that can be an impossible living situation. And until you've lived where you can never find a place to park and never hear yourself think before midnight at night, the impact that some of these things can have, and this is yet one more attempt to... to try to bring some kind of sanity to those kind of situations. And that was part of what this was all about also. Mayor, Mayor Wile, I'm sorry.
No, I think it's Member Wile then.
Yeah.
Again, my, my thing is they should, we should be doing prosecution because that's the law on the books right now. I, I know that we talk about, I think it was that the phrase Dale would use, "A teachable moment" or something like that, but I don't know. I, I look at it and say, "I think we should just go ahead and do this stuff, send another letter out saying, 'We're going to prosecute you if you haven't done it by this time,' and then proceed to prosecute. You can change the laws afterwards." I don't expect to have a lot of success with this in one sense. I had a conversation with a, a renter last week who took it to court. Basically, he had 17 violations on his house. He's talked to me and said, "Okay, what's going on with this?" And he, there were more violations that they didn't add on because the thing has been trained through the court. He calls me up last week and says, "Well, they got a $75 fine." And this is after four months of, of leaking roofs and 17 violations. He says the roof still hasn't been fixed and that the fire extinguisher showed up about two weeks ago. Again, this is all anecdotal because I'm getting over the phone. I really don't want to get involved in this because he wants me to go to bat on this. And at the same time, it's like, okay, so how do we fix this? From my point of view, I get, essentially, I think we should put in legislation some kind of no rental permit if you have any outstanding violations, period. We can do it at June when the, the leases turn over. We can do it in January, so we have six months of people in limbo. We should put a high fee of reenlistment if you have those violations cleared. Right now, I think if you have a late fee, there's a 10% or 20% late fee for your, you don't get your permit in on time. That doesn't sound like a lot when it's $90 per permit.
But it worked, right?
What?
But it worked.
It worked. But if the whole thing, if you're trying to get rid of violations or trying to get somebody to sign these things, and they say, "Well, we just have to fill out 10% of our late fee," well, maybe it might work. No, no rental p, permit for violations. This is not a revocation. It's just not another permit reestablished because you have outstanding things. No difference than any, what we're doing with the tickets in the cars right now. I mean, basically, you have too many tickets out there. You go to the, the motor vehicle, and for some reason, you can't get your license or your registration renewed. In high school, I had a friend of mine who used to park illegally all the time to rack up about $1,200 worth of tickets. And this isn't $70 because it was much easier for him to park close to his house, his apartment, than down the block to his apartment, the parking place. Usually, the thing that would trip him is when he got up to money and he had a windfall and he'd just pay it. But when he had to register his car every year or his license every three years. I thought it was very poor, but he felt it was effective. And this is, I don't know what the deal was on that, but that was his mindset. I think in multiple, let's, let me tell you a parable about boil orders, okay? Boil orders, we did a nine, reverse 911 on Saturday. We put it out on the television. We proceeded to also, we did put it on the web because the web guy wasn't around. We were in the midst of Halloween, as you know. We sent it out to 27 different people by fax. We sent it out to 21 people or 17 people by, by email. Lots of people didn't get it. So with that in mind, if we want to do some education and some teachable moments, we should think about doing this requirement of putting this form in writing and have it in the code offices. We should also actually require them, maybe to still have one on site. We should put one on the door, which is what we were discussing about two weeks ago. So they have it plastered on the door. We should do multiple ways of doing it. If it takes branding, maybe we should do that. I say that in jest. Don't quote me on that. But we need multiple methods. That's quite obvious with boil orders. That's quite obvious with this teachable moment that has to be done. We, I know we go to community cookouts. I know the, you know, the off-campus housing has a newsletter that occurs quarterly that gives you this information. You know, remember, for teachable moments, there's also tuition involved. We should also look and see what the fines are for this type of stuff. If worst-case scenario, I think the students should be signing it. If it doesn't work and they refuse to sign it, we can always get the landlord to cut out the little signature on the check and stick it here. So what? It's only one check worth, you know. What's one month's worth of just to have this form filled? That maybe should be the fine level we should have. So it behooves them to cut out that little signature right there, put it in, in there, and lose that one month's check. Because certainly, they're getting signatures every month, I believe, unless they're doing it by direct withdrawal and deposit. So these are things to think about. The other things I wrote, when you start talking about good landlords or bad landlords, I kind of visualize Oz. It's like, when it comes down, are you a good landlord or are you a bad landlord?
Probably the rent tenants could tell you.
Yes, I know. And I thought they were developing a database on that. So there's always one portion of that. But again, you know, if you're going to do it, the best way to do is, there's no money coming in if these things aren't filled. I think that we have a law that's on the book that's not, that needs to be, at least run through the court system. And again, I, I, as I say, when somebody says they've had four, 17 violations for four months and they get a $75 fine, I don't know what that means, except it's not cost-effective. It's not a teachable moment, nor is the tuition. And that's all I have to say.
Other comments?
I just had a question. So are you maybe suggesting or advocating for upping the fines with that, you think, to make it more meaningful?
Well, no. The, the biggest fine would be no permit at this point, no money coming in. I mean, at that point, then you don't have rental because you can't, you've got outstanding violations. It's quite obvious you can't, it, you know, realize, you rack your car up against five, six, you know, telephone poles, they'll probably say, you know, "I don't think you should have a license. You're not running the car. You needed to go back to school, learn how to drive." Same thing with rental. If you're not running a rental right and you're running it into, you know, all sorts of violations, you should start thinking about it. We should start thinking about it. These are permits. This is not a right. This is a permit to do this type of stuff, you know. Or we can just abandon it. We can have it just do free fall, and then we can have more fires like Stimson or something like that. We can do that, too. You know, I mean, you know, we can have, oh, you take it over. How about that? Would that be something useful?
No.
Bring it back to 60s? Come on. But again, to increase the fines, I don't know why it takes to increase the fines. Somewhere along the line, you probably top out and you're in some other land of felonies and high misdemeanities that require court cases and lots of problems. But at the same time, you know, the simple thing is that if you have outstanding ones, and it could be for the fire extinguishers, it could be for all this stuff, but the fact is, you know, you, you, it behooves you to get it done. It behooves you to, to address the problems that, when code says you have violation X, Y, and Z, or A, B, and C, you know. And if they come back and they can't, and they're not getting satisfaction, you know, come, come rental time, which it will count against you. You know, we're supposed to have onsite management here somewhere, so they should be accountable, too. If it's not the landlord, it should be a management system. I don't know. What, you know, it's your, you know, you can, I'm hoping this will get, you know, dealt with. You know, you realize, we're all paying a dollar for the litter control. This is part of the thing here, you know, litter accumulation, refuse, where you put your cans, type stuff. So citizens are paying for that. So we can, we can track it for other grownups.
Other comments? Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to again thank everyone on council and the mayor, and as well as those members of the community who have taken time out of their schedules to be here tonight and to share their views with, I think, all of us. I've certainly spoken to a lot of people, you know, on, on all sides of this issue, and I really do thank all of them for, for their input. Before we would allow the code office to begin filing criminal charges in all of these cases, I felt that I had a responsibility as law director, as an employee of the people, and as having city council as a client. I felt that I had a responsibility to, to let council know, you know, basically two things about this law. Number one, that despite some, some pretty aggressive efforts, I think, in trying to inform people about this law and inform landlords that we were going to enforce this law, that we had run into, you know, what I would consider to be some pretty rampant noncompliance. And so that was point number one. And point number two was that there are potential issues with this law. And I wanted to give council the opportunity to basically say one of two things, to either say, "Now is a good opportunity before we begin taking cases to court. Now's a good opportunity to begin to address some of these concerns," or we can say, "Let's just go forward with enforcement as it exists. And if there are problems with this, then we can deal with them down the line." And it sounds pretty, pretty unanimously from what I'm hearing tonight, that, that it's council's wish to go forward with enforcement as it exists. And if there are, you know, changes that need to be made, or if a court were to tell us that there is a problem with a certain part of this law down the road, that we can, can deal with those at another time, or perhaps deal with some of the issues regarding the form, just do that administratively without requiring an act of council. So again, I do thank everyone for their time and their input on this. To be clear, it is actually the code office that will be filing these charges. The director of code enforcement will be responsible for coming in, signing off on the complaints. We do have several hundred of them prepared already, and it would be my intention to, to move forward with, with immediate enforcement on this. Actually, our, the person within my office, Lisa Eliasen, is our chief city prosecutor and the person responsible for the prosecution of code violations in my office. And I will certainly, certainly request that we, we get rolling on this right away. Are there any other questions for me?
So?
Seeing none, yes, number nine.
So I have a question on the process of this. Is your office going to be issuing, did I hear earlier, one more letter saying, "We're going to prosecute"?
For anyone that hasn't received a letter, we need to, and this gets into, I mean, this is something I think we can work through. Of course, we can only go, my office can only go on the records that we are getting from the code office. I can't vouch for, for how good or bad those records may be. But we will get those records. For any people that have not yet gotten a letter, we will send out a letter to that group. But for, it would be my intent for those that we've already sent a letter to, to say that we intend to take you to court if you don't get these forms filed. I see no reason to, to send a second letter. I guess my position would be just to, let's go ahead and start filing.
Okay.
And then we can always file more down the road as, you know, for those that don't, that we do send a letter to that don't comply, then we can begin enforcement of that as well. But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, folks understood this is actually the code office itself that will be filing these charges.
Number Wile. Mayor Wile?
Getting closer.
Yeah, getting closer, yeah. Question in terms of point of legality. We have an interim code director right now. If he should sign off those things and cease to be the interim, what is the validity of that?
As a, as a, as an evidentiary matter, I guess, for lack of a better word, it would be basically anyone from the code office that has knowledge of, of the process and could, would be in a position to testify about what the rules are and, you know, how a certain, you know, person may or may not have followed those rules. So I don't think that would be a hurdle just because, just because of the change at the, at the top of that office.
Okay. Any other comments?
Member Sands? Sure. I just, I wanted to say that we planned this meeting tonight as a work session for council only. We did take public comment two weeks ago, and I think we've heard concerns all around the table here, that there are changes, whether they be slight or major, that we would like to see made to this ordinance in the future. So I, I'm sure that there will be opportunities for public input as we go through all of those discussions. But I think the law director has heard what council feels pretty much across the board.
I just wanted to clarify. You're thinking that there may be changes to the form itself, not the ordinance that passed?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just, I just wanted to clarify that, make sure everybody was on the same page, so.
And as I understand, it is written in a way that the administration can make a lot of those changes without any further action needed by council.
There's a fair amount of administrative discretion in the way that it's written into the code. So I just wanted to, to make sure that, and I think most of us on council certainly understood this, but, you know, I don't think, there's not a case where a non-enforcement was ever going to be an option. I think it was very clear that we were going to enforce, and it was just a question of, do we want to take an opportunity now to, to review things, or do we want to just move forward and deal with problems down the road? So, I mean, there's no question there. There will be legal challenges filed against this law, and certainly our office will, will defend them.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Seeing none and having addressed this item on our agenda and seeing that it's about 13 minutes before 7:30, we'll be back at about 7:30 with regular session of council. Thank you.
Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings, TGC 15 presents...
Disposition of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from October 20th and the special session held on October 27, 2008?
Summon.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been accepted. Under communications, well, this has been a week for communications. I'm in communication from a, a email that was sent to quite a few people, including Nick Carr, all members of council, regarding the boil order that the city labored under this weekend from Bernhard De Batton. It's a very good email, and I would like to address a couple of points from it. City council and its communications arm, the government channel, which basically maintains the website for the city, has been going under some massive renovations for a long time now. And fortunately, we are going to be able to start sending out emails and text messages to anyone wishing to receive that communication for any boil order. This coming Friday at noon, we are going to run forth to the government channel. In this room, we'll demonstrate to, hopefully, the neighborhood associations, the members of the media, and any other interested people that would like to be here to see how do you sign up for the emails and text messages. This is part of our new website that enables us to do this. So fortunately, we are going to be able to start doing that as of a week from today. It's unfortunate that we weren't able to do that over the weekend. I think it was midday, mid-afternoon on Sunday before I found out that there was a boil order and had been boil order and even more consuming water and doing that like most everybody else in the city, I would assume. So anyway, that is one thing I am pleased to let everyone know, that we will have the availability to do that starting a week from today. It is also my understanding that reverse 911 call did go out. And for those that do not understand that, I did receive one a period of time ago when a small child was missing that causes all of the telephones in a certain geographic area to ring in an odd sequential ring, and it will play a message telling people that, the emergency message that was sent out. I don't know that it went everywhere. I don't know that it's a perfect science. My guess is, it isn't, but you do what you can do. Other communications, I am also in receipt of a letter from the S. Locker and Aramis Law Firm questioning the adoption and the Roberts Rules of Orders that was followed when we adopted our, the resolution, basically referring to Responsible Contractor Bid Criteria R-0808. This is being passed on to all members of council and the law director, and we will be addressing that in due course. Let's see, other communications. I guess that's everything I have. Reports and communications from other elected, oh, are there any other communications that any member of council wished to share? Under reports and communications from other elected officials, did somebody hold up their hand?
I did.
I'm sorry, member nine. I did not mean to slight you.
That's okay, because I was a little tentative about that.
You live way down there, and I don't always see.
I just have to stop my hand. I, I would like to just take a moment to thank the, some of the citizens that turned out on the Halloween safety street patrols. And I hesitated because I imagined Mayor Wile might mention something. But that was just really appreciated. We had a good group of people, and Ron Lucas did a really fine job of getting everybody organized and giving us all instructions on how to do it. And he's a positive enough, have enough experience. I think word must be spreading. We already had two volunteers for next year. Their names are on my calendar already. I'm not going to forget. But I just wanted to thank those people who did turn out for what was a, a long evening.
Thank you. Mayor Wile?
Well, to stay in the same vein, I want to thank the city staff that did a lot of work, you know, watching this go down. They, they've been, they pull out the, you know, the formula for 30 years of Halloween. And of course, I throw a few wrenches in with beer gardens, et cetera, et cetera. But they work real hard, and I want to thank them. As well as, as Chris says, the volunteers, which she is one and Alahu is another. which she is one and Alahu is another. They're wandering around with white jackets on, saying "safety team," and getting probably a lot of people commenting on their costumes. I'm sure they had a fun time. I wandered around and ran into them several times, the various safety teams, when I was on my way through the city. So I'd say thanks for everybody to do that. For the fire department for responding so quickly to Stimson Avenue, that fire that happened there. In terms of Halloween, I do not have all the numbers in. Right now, the tally I'm getting is about 51,000, but I still have a couple departments that have yet to bring in their butcher bill, so to speak. Same thing with the revenue for the Beer Garden, as well as any other revenues. That's one thing I just wanted to mention. There's two other notices I'd like to bring up. One is, I think I passed you a student senate resolution about the bicycles. You should receive copies, at least transportation environments should have received that. There's a resolution passed October 15th by University Student Senate. They would like to actually try working out a bike sharing program within the campus, and they want me to basically be favorable for it, and I am. It depends on how it's going to work out, of course. That's the devil's in the details. The other thing I want to mention is, well, another thing is that there will be an open house meeting for the FEMA flood maps, and that's going to be November 19th, and it's going to be between 4:00 and 7:00 at the community center, Room A. This is where they're going to discuss the, they've drawn up some preliminary flood plan maps, floodway maps, and flood plane maps, and I guess they'll start the commentary period at that point. And then, of course, the boil order, which was done on Saturday, and I said there was a reverse call, 911. The process, the way I understand it, it goes through the emergency system from the county. We tell them to call it out, we tell them to do the area. They did the east side, which was a critical area. Again, we found bacteria counts in, the way it operates is Thursday, you get some hits, they go out and check it before they start calling it, they replayed it. I'm not a microbiologist, but I've spent enough time with microbiology to know that it takes a long time for any bacteria to grow. So they wait 24 hours, that's Thursday, they see the results on Friday. Friday, they go and check it. By law, we check upstream and downstream from the area, and then by Saturday, if they see more hits, that's when the boil order went out. And again, they did reverse 911 at that point for the areas that they were seeing it, which is east side. They flushed the systems out. They drained the entire reservoir, hope reservoir, twice, and they've left the chlorine and everything. Right now, the samples that they took Saturday, Sunday, are not due yet. In other words, Saturday they took samples, Sunday they took samples, and they're narrowing it down. That's why the west end of town, everything is pretty much denominated on the east side of 33. And that's where we stand right now. Cause and effect is still not found out, so we're still working on that. We had, I had conversations with Nick Carr on Sunday, met him Sunday at the department. We had the EPA in today, see if they could look at it as well. So we're working on it. But again, we're getting, we're still flushing, we're still chlorinating, and we're checking all the systems up and down the line. So that's where we are right now.
Questions, comments for the mayor?
Mind about Halloween? Get off these.
Boy, remember one, it's a big issue. City auditor Kathy Hekt.
I have no report. I do have unappropriated balance sheets tonight for October, if anybody wants those. If you want them now, or you just want me to give them to you at the end, or?
And.
And. Be quick.
Okay, that's it for me, then.
Okay. City treasurer Mary Ann McClure.
I do have a report. I have the third quarter year-to-date interest income report. We're at $317,413 out of the projected $437,644. My best estimate for where we're going to end up is somewhere around $370,000. I have only one CD rolling over now. The rest of them aren't until the spring. The additional packet that's being passed around is the summary of the first six months of bank reconciliations. At the auditor's recommendation, I'll be submitting these reports to council now. I'll be heading towards a monthly schedule. You have the first six months now, the beginning of December, I'll be bringing third quarter, and then at the beginning of January, I'll bring October, November, and then I'll be, you know, just one month, one month back, so that you'll have them as they're completed. Still tweaking a few details in third quarter right now, so I'll present that all at once when we're finished. Any questions on either report?
Questions for the treasurer? Thank you, Mary Ann.
I was going to make a comment quickly. The treasurer mentioned that the auditor was requiring these reports. Again, it's the state auditors.
Kathy, the outside auditor, I'm sorry.
It's the state auditors who come to us annually, and they go over both the city auditor and the city treasurer's reports, and they often make suggestions, and their suggestions are viewed as very strong suggestions, so.
The first year you get them their suggestions, they work their way up to findings eventually, as well.
Well, they are recommendations, and it is, you know, for the goal of having council informed regularly.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Walter Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to briefly echo the mayor's comments regarding Halloween, I would just like to extend my thanks to all of those people, both within the city and from outside the city, that worked to make this Halloween run as smoothly as it did. My office is certainly going to be busy with prosecuting the cases from this weekend, but there were certainly no major incidents, and I think that is a testament to the preparation and to the people who were involved in that preparation. And so I just want all of those folks, law enforcement, safety teams, et cetera, to accept my thanks and the thanks of my office.
Thank you.
Bill, can I just want to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to include the Beer Garden, from my understanding and doing the final count with the organizers very late Saturday night, was that it did come in a little bit less than their expectations, but did fairly well. I know they'll be bringing a report, but they also reported it was, you know, the behavior was good, and they did, in fact, check IDs on everyone who came in, so I think it went well, and I want to do it again next year already.
Under ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 11208, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary, and enter into contract to replace the air conditioning system in the law administration building. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 11208. Second. This ordinance does authorize exactly what it says in its title. The air conditioning unit on top of the law administration building has not been working very satisfactorily recently, and the problem has been traced to this chiller unit, which needs to be replaced, about $45,000. The law administration fund, the building improvements fund, has got money in it, so we're just appropriating money for that purpose.
Member Bain.
And it was collected from the law administration tax that has since expired, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's true.
So it's not coming out of general fund?
And cannot be used for other purposes.
Cannot be used for other purposes.
Further discussion? All in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 11208 is adopted. Ordinance 11408, an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce year-end appropriations. Play on this one, member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 11408. Second. Again, just as it says in its title, we are authorizing the auditor to reduce funds that have appropriations left over at the end of the year to zero, again, at the recommendation of our state auditors. In previous years, we have, as a council, looked at those funds and dealt with them individually. Last year, I believe, we gave the auditor the authorization to deal with those in her office, so that we don't have to.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 114?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 11508, an ordinance amending ordinance 015107, authorizing staffing levels and declaring non-emergency. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 011508.
Second.
011508 is a moat, is an ordinance that will make permanent things that we have, positions that we have not funded before in the last couple of years. Specifically, what we are doing is, we are reducing the line in authorized staffing levels for firefighter from 18 to 16. We are eliminating the general secretary in the code office. We are reducing the labor, trainee slash maintenance tech in streets by, from 12 to 11. We are deleting the recreation assistant director, and we are eliminating the assistant director of recreation on this. These are not positions that are currently held by individuals, they are positions we hoped we'd have enough money to fund. I think it's important for us to note, and I did the arithmetic here a minute ago, we are down, since 2001, 10 FTE in the city. The reduction has been not systematic, but certainly is something that is worthy of attention. We just have inadequate cash to fund the level of staffing that we had earlier times, and so that's what's going on in this ordinance. Once again, we are not cutting positions that are currently staffed, instead, we are cutting our wish list. You all know that I would love to increase it by one with an engineer. We have increased with a planner, but we've lost then some other positions. So it's very tough for us to be in this position, but it's the times we're living in.
Motion and second to adopt ordinance 115, is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11608, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of 011608.
Second.
And this is, we have described this in several other meetings, this is to eliminate several of the vehicles that are used by the street department, and we are reducing their force, there's net decrease in their fleet by seven, 7%. And this will be the ordinance that authorizes them to dispose of these.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 11608 is adopted. Ordinance 11708, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to purchase two three-quarter ton trucks for the street department. Again, member Nysley.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of 011708.
Second.
And this is for the purchase of two trucks, one gas, one diesel, that will be used by the street department, and this replaces several of the trucks just disposed of in the previous ordinance.
Further discussion?
I do have one question. Last week, we discussed, and it's a question for Debbie, you'll probably be able to answer this for me. We did talk about adding the small pickup truck in to make that language consistent.
Okay, well.
And we don't have to by law, because it's under the $25,000 limit, but Mr. Hazlitt thought that it might be more consistent to have that listed at audit time, that it would match then, the ordinance would match records for purchase of vehicles.
Let me describe to you what you need to do, then, from a Roberts Rules of Order.
I was afraid of this.
You would need to withdraw your motion to adopt, as would your second. Then you would need to move to amend ordinance 11708, and we have a copy of the amendment that you would need to do here. That, should you get an affirmative vote of council to do that, that'll take it to first reading. Then you would need to move to suspend the rules, and then move to adopt. Would that be your wish?
Yes, Mr. President.
So I will entertain a motion to withdraw your motion to adopt.
Mr. President, I move to withdraw the motion to adopt 011708.
You draw my second.
And.
Is there further discussion on this motion only? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Mr. President, I move to amend 011708.
And as I understand it, that amendment would amend title in section one to include the compact pickup truck, amend section two to increase the authorized expenditure from $75,000 to $90,000, and to add a new section to authorize an appropriation of $9,000.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment is read?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has now been amended and read for the first time.
So, Mr. President, I move to approve.
No.
No, suspend.
Suspend.
Suspend, excuse me, okay.
You're catchy.
All right, I move to suspend 011708.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
And I think I heard member Sands again?
Yes.
Second.
Okay.
And the reason for the suspension is a tying consideration, I would think?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is there further discussion on suspension only? I don't know why I needed you seven people, I could do this alone. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 11708?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance, the rules have been suspended on ordinance 11708.
Mr. President, thank you.
And now you move to adopt.
Move to adopt 011708.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion on 11708? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is amended, suspended, and adopted. Ordinance 11808, an ordinance authorizing the mayor then or into a contract to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 011808.
Second.
This ordinance, we've discussed several times, this is a change from council's past contract with the Chamber of Commerce, where there's a new entity forming that is an Economic Development Council. The city of Athens will be a partner there. The business plan is attached to the contract, and I believe really shows very close alignment with the goals that citizens in Athens laid out in the Athens 2020 Comprehensive Plan, with a clear focus on sector-based economic development, including clean energy and supporting our local food economy. I believe this is a way for us to responsibly help promote economic development in the city of Athens, hopefully, you know, ultimately increasing our tax base and our ability to fund infrastructure. The funding for this contract comes from the tourism fund, which comes into the city through the hotel motel tax, which is a tax, the city gets a portion of that, and the county gets a portion of that, and we have traditionally used that for tourism and for the economic development work.
Motion and a second to adopt ordinance 118, is there further discussion on the ordinance? Member Bain.
Oh, Mr. President, members of the audience, I would like to probably throw a little wrench into this for a while. My reasoning is this, I think our economic situation has changed. Before, earlier times, we have used this money for something else, and maybe the something else would be to plug a hole in the general fund, so we could hire an engineer. I don't think we really know what our situation is. I think we're in a situation with respect to funding, where this money may be needed for a city purpose, rather than another purpose, an external purpose, and I would like to, in a moment, move to table it for two months, and I'm sure there are enough votes to pass it, and I'll probably be roundly defeated, but my goal would be, if we can do this, if we can find the money, okay, but not before we hire maybe an engineer, or something like that. What we could do is take the $50,000, plug the hole in the general fund, because we're taking half a million dollars from water and sewer, and we could actually hire an engineer, so we would have better activities, better supervision, better planning in our infrastructure. My second reason for asking this, though, and I haven't made the motion yet to table it, is that we're putting down two jobs, two positions. We just cut, we've had 10 lost in our, in our city budget over the last 10 years, 10 FTE, and we're putting in a salary for 44,000.
FTE, and we're putting in a salary for fifty—for forty thousand one, but seventy-six thousand, which is way more than almost anyone else in the city makes. And so, there's no national search going on for it, which troubles me a little bit. I guess I come from a situation where if you have a high-powered position, you do a search. You don't just put it out there for whoever had it last time. You don't write your own job description. I mean, I don't mean to be offensive about that, but you don't do that when you have this level of activity going on. So, I guess that I may lose miserably, but at least I'd like to see some slowdown on this because, you know, I've been listening to the radio a lot, and I know how much our economic situation has changed. I know how much my personal economic situation has changed. This money is ours to use as we choose. We have a planner who can do the site work if needed for these many developments that come in. Therefore, I'm going to move to table 011808.
Second.
And the tabling would be for—it would not go on forever, but until we know exactly if we have enough money to fund an engineering position or something else.
Motion and a second to table ordinance one eighteen oh eight. Further discussion on tabling?
Better ask for a show of hands.
Member Gosny.
I—I agree. I think our financial situation has changed. That's obvious. However, I think looking forward, the economic development that is being done by the chamber right now could be expanded upon under this, and in the long-term economic health of our city, I think it's important to have someone out there working to create these jobs and attract attract potentially new businesses and help mature the businesses that are starting here. So, I oppose tabling, and I think we need to get rolling on this.
I will probably lose miserably, yeah.
Member Phillips.
Did we already have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
That we need to deal with before we talk about that?
The motion to table can—
This is an subsidiary motion which would need to be dealt with before the question—
The motion to adopt.
Okay.
We've learned that recently.
So, the question about the overall economic situation—the city of Athens had a soft hiring freeze in place for a number of years during the Abel administration. That's something that we've been coping with over a period of time, and I think we have handled it responsibly as council members. I think we've dealt with our revenue situation. I believe that the contract that is under discussion here this evening lays out a more transparent and a more directly accountable relationship regarding economic development than we've had in the past. I believe that it addresses significant questions that have been raised over the years and really helps move us in the direction of having a direct line of accountability for the use of public funds for economic development.
Further discussion on tabling. Member Sands.
Member Bain and I are chairing the Finance Committee, and I share her concerns about the state of the city's finances as a—as kind of an unknown at this point, but I—I probably won't vote for the—I won't vote for the tabling fund—the tabling issue because I agree with member Phillips and member Gosny that this operation that we're voting on tonight offers our best chance for expanding the economic base of our city, which then enhances the health of our general fund.
Member Nysley.
I am very supportive of the proposal, but I do feel that looking at finances and as we begin to budget, that we need to be very cautious, and so, I would vote for tabling. Not against it, but just temporarily until we see a better financial picture.
Other comments? Member Butler.
Thank you, President. I am not in favor of the tabling. I welcome the continuity of the office and that Athens Economic Development Council will continue to offer, and feel that that is terribly important. And although I do appreciate member Bain's thoughts and respect her opinion, and do see the need for an engineer as well, I feel that it's possible to do both and to begin with this process of moving forward with the ordinance.
We've had a motion and a second to table ordinance one eighteen oh eight. Is there further discussion?
Ask for a show of hands. Please.
Of course. All those in favor of tabling the ordinance, please signify by raising your hand. All those against tabling the ordinance? The clerk of counsel shall in a minute reflect the vote by name. Tabling ordinance one eighteen has been defeated. We move on to ordinance to adopt. We've had a motion and a second to adopt. Is there further discussion on adoption? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. On ordinances for first reading, ordinance one twenty oh eight, an ordinance amending the two thousand and eight appropriation ordinance and authorizing an interfund transfer. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this ordinance, as many of our finance ordinances do, has several activities going on here. The first is appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars to the Tourism Fund to cover our fourth quarter payment to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is two thousand and eight obligation to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. They receive thirty-five percent of the funds we receive—we collect for hotel motel taxes, and we've actually collected more this year, so this is an appropriation to—this increases the appropriation to allow us to—to transfer thirty-five percent to them. Also, eighteen thousand four hundred dollars is appropriated to the Cable Access Fund for later transfer. We'll talk about that in a minute. Also, eighteen thousand dollars to the Athens Enhancement Fund to pay for floodplain mapping. I've heard a comment from the mayor that we were going to have an open house about those maps.
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is to pay for enhancement mapping that we are required to do at this point. Section two, authorize to the auditor to make an interfund transfer of that eighteen thousand four hundred dollars from the Cable Access Fund to—actually, to the general fund—the council fund within the general fund. And finally, it breaks down that money—the eighteen thousand dollars—to fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for use to buy—to purchase high-definition cameras for the—for our studio, and four thousand dollars to the general fund to lease an editing computer, and that covers the money in that. And I have not heard that we needed to suspend on this.
I don't think so.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments on ordinance one twenty? Ordinance one twenty-one oh eight, an ordinance amending ordinance oh one fifty-four oh seven, authorizing cleaning and repair of water wells. Haven't seen this in a while. Member Bain.
Oh, Mr. President, this time I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Second.
The suspension of the rules is requested because we have several bids. The bid that the Board of Control would like to accept is within the framework of our possibilities with the ten percent add-on, but it's slightly more in order to get a better well-cleaning operation in a timely fashion, and I realized I was lapsing into the next phase, but there it is. I'd like to move to suspend the rules in order to accept the bid that's in place.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance one twenty-one. All those in—or is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are suspended.
Move adoption of 021 oh eight.
Second.
We annually clean our water wells, some—two of them out of the twenty or so that we have operational, and I guess it's a little late in the year, but better late than never because we have to keep on a cycle to get these things done. And I also appreciate the fact that the Service Safety Director is trying very hard to get the best bid as opposed to the lowest bid, so that's a plus here. So, that's why I'm supporting the twenty-one oh eight—121 oh eight.
Motion and second to adopt ordinance one twenty-one. All those in favor—oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Wild.
Also, I'll point out that this actually—the ordinance you're amending is from last year, which of course was authorizing us to do well-cleaning this year, which means it's probably going to be time to start up the next one for next year as well.
We'll see how this one goes, maybe.
Okay.
So, know how much we need. I thought that myself.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance one twenty-two oh eight, an ordinance amending ordinance eighty-nine oh eight, authorizing the purchase of a bucket truck and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Okay. Mr. President, I ask that we consider this ordinance, 0122 oh eight, under suspension of the rules.
Of course. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And this is for the purchasing—
Let's discuss the reason for suspension first.
The suspension, okay. As we just received news today that we do have another possibility for purchasing the bucket trucks and getting a trade-in at a better price, and we feel like—we think that it would be best to proceed at all—
It all do fit. So, is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance one twenty-two?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of 0122 oh eight.
Second.
Thank you. And this is for the purchase of two bucket trucks, and at the same time, we'll be—we will be trading in another and—excuse me, bucket truck. And this actually—one bucket truck. And this actually will replace a large bucket truck, a small bucket truck, and then actually a an electrical vehicle utility truck, so it's actually taking the place of three.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? One twenty-two has been adopted.
I was hoping they have only one.
Onto a one-reading resolution. Resolution oh nine oh eight, resolution endorsing House Bill five oh two and Senate Bill three oh five of the one-twenty-seventh Ohio General Assembly. Who will speak to this? Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of resolution oh nine oh eight.
Second.
This is asking—this is—this resolution would express city council's support for this bill that is going through the House—Ohio House Bill four—five oh two and Senate Bill five-three oh five. It's a—it is our support for the bill which which prohibits discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation in the state of Ohio. Since we've been given this to—to consider, the Athens Community Relations Commission has looked at this proposal and is one-hundred percent behind it, and I just made a comment earlier that city council in two thousand and seven passed a resolution joining the National League of Cities, working toward inclusive communities. So, this is a further step—this would be a further step in city council's support for nondiscriminatory activities.
Further discussion on resolution oh nine oh eight?
Bill, I think that we had a—didn't we have an addition as well?
I believe that the spokesperson that was up last time said that it was also identity as well added to it, which is a—
I think that's at the bottom whereas.
Yeah, okay. So, and we need to then amend perhaps our own, but I thought that was an informative—a different wrinkle on as compared to our existing—
What we have does not—
What we have in the city—
Does not.
Could be amended to include.
Yeah.
Okay.
However, if this passes in the state—
It will be okay.
In role.
Mood point.
It'll be a mood.
They finally passed us. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this issue? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution oh nine oh eight?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is adopted. Onto announcements and other business. I probably should have mentioned this under communication, but I am in receipt of one other communication that I did want to make city council and others aware of. This is from Chris Dahl of the Athens City Planning Commission, the chair, dated October ninth, recommendation to RO three oh eight. The Athens City Planning Commission received a request. Is this old? Did I?
Yeah, it is old.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought this was something new. I did not see the date, so ignore that. Are there any other announcements or other business? Member Bain.
I think we're going to start our budget discussions next week, aren't we? Some people are already geared up and going. Some of us are farther behind. That would be me. So, we'll do some and then go on this.
Do we foresee any work sessions with that?
Well, let's go for about an hour work session and have something else after it or before it, like a half hour and then a half hour. Wouldn't that work? A half hour of regular council meetings and then a work session on the budget and then another half hour.
I guess I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, I don't want to put it all off till eight o'clock or we'll all be brain-dead, but I was thinking that, you know, maybe we could have—alwho knows what to explain to them when I try to—
Have a half hour—a work session before our council meeting, then a half hour afterwards, right?
Yeah, or—okay.
Our committee meetings.
Committee meetings.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, that's—
Okay.
Brain-dead is—
It does sit in about this time every night, I've noticed, or it certainly does for me. Speaking of committee meetings.
So, that's finance and personnel.
Right.
There's one.
Work session.
I will likely need one for the Environment Committee. We'll see how far along I am on the wellhead changes that we talked about last time.
Okay. Any others? Sounds like an easy night for a committee, so it sounds like a great time to work on the budget, doesn't it? Any other announcements or other business? Now, onto an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak before council? Yes, please come to the podium. You can give us your name, your address, and you're welcome to address this for up to three minutes.
Lindsay Daniels, Twenty-Fiveview Avenue. I just want to speak real briefly about the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes campaign. First, just to mention that it's going to be held this Sunday, the ninth, eleven a.m., starting at the Women's Center, which is four oh three Baker University Center, whatever it's called now, and it'd be great to see all the men in this room, dawn some pumps and speak out against sexualized violence. But the real reason why I bring it up tonight is just to maybe draw some attention to maybe some potential miscommunication potentially between—well, really among city council, maybe city administration, maybe just some different folks. And I want to say that I haven't been involved in the planning or organization of the event. I do support it, but I have been in contact with some folks who have done some of the planning, and I just—I guess it's about communication. I'm not doing a real good job articulating myself because I didn't really plan what I was going to say, but just—I guess in the future, it would be nice for students to have a clear path or community members to have a clear path to really discuss some of these issues. I know that there was some miscommunication about the closing of the street, maybe some miscommunication about the fee for the parade permit and that kind of stuff, and it's just unfortunate that some of that didn't get cleared up before the march actually happened, and I just want to make sure that there are some real clear avenues before Take Back the Night happens in the spring. So, that's really all I want to say.
Start now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd kind of like to see the mayor in some four-inch heels myself.
Maybe eight-inch.
Eight-inch, yeah.
Those are the new ones.
Really? Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council? Yes, please.
I'm Mike Wood, I'm in two-eight-nine Carroll. While the council is addressing the budget and 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 some of the infrastructure I think was brought up, I think one of the things that needs to be addressed is dealing with Athens city's failing infrastructure, more specifically, the water. I think—I think it's the citizens' rights to know what their basic rights are. I think, I think it's the citizens' rights to know what their basic rights are. At the most basic level, the Ohio Consumer Council requires that potable water be received and is drinkable. And this has not been happening. So, I think at the next council meeting, I'd like to see, like to see the infrastructure addressed. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak before council tonight? Seeing none and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.